Calling to order today's meeting, it's our work session. Today is March 6th, first Wednesday of the month. Calling the meeting to order and let us do a roll call for tonight. Councilmember Shimaleski.
Present.
Councilmember Serna.
Here.
Councilmember Barton.
Here.
Councilmember Elam.
Here.
Councilmember Frye.
Here.
Vice President Sokolowski, I mean Vice President Kingsley. Woo, now he's asleep. President Sokolowski here.
Mayor Aronson.
Here.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. From an announcement perspective, prior to our work session this evening, the Borough Council held an executive session on personnel, property, and legal matters. Before we get started on tonight's agenda, I'd like to take the opportunity to extend a welcome to some of the new members of our borough team. I'd like to welcome Caitlin Welding, our code enforcement officer, Jose Ortiz, our public service laborer, Joshua Pierce, our public service laborer, and Calvin Pearlman, a part-time firefighter. Welcome to the new employees of the borough. Also, if anyone's interested in joining our team, we're currently accepting applications for a new administrative assistant position. The job description can be found online at the borough website, and the borough is accepting applications through March 15th. At this time, I'd also like to take the opportunity to extend congratulations to borough employees who were recently promoted within our organizational structure. When you promote from within, staff see opportunity and become less likely to leave an organization and see opportunities for growth. With that, I'd like to congratulate Dan Ingram as our stormwater manager, Mike Maxwell as our facilities manager, Derek Haley as our highway manager, Ernesto Contreras as our landscaping and grounds manager, Anthony Scott as a driver, James Schaefer as a stormwater laborer, William Gale as a stormwater laborer, Shawna Weisal as an executive administrative assistant for operations, Tim Gunning as the director of fire services, and Chris Small the director of licenses and inspections. Congratulations to all of our new leaders. I know sometimes people have concerns related to the qualifications of our teams and our hires. I can assure you that all of the individuals promoted have the education, certification, coaching, and skill development required to perform their roles, and we are proud to see them grow within our organization. Congratulations and thank you for all your hard work and dedication to the borough of Conshohocken and to make Conshohocken the premier place to live, work, play, and grow. With that, we will continue on our agenda, and I am very excited to have a group of young ladies present to us their idea. We received letters from these ladies probably before the holidays. So our Girl Scouts are going to come forward and do a presentation for us about a Gaga pit that they would like to see the borough adopt into our Parks and Rec program. With that, I will introduce Holly Holst and the representatives of Girl Scout Troop 7044 to formally present their request for an installation of the Gaga pit.
Thank you. Thank you for taking time out of the meeting for us this evening. My name is Holly Holst, and along with Whitney Holst, we are the leaders of Girl Scout Troop 7044. Our troop formed in March of 2020 when these girls were in kindergarten. We could not hold our first meeting because of things that happened that year, of course. We couldn't have our first in-person meeting until the late fall of 2020. And despite the early challenges, these girls have shown resilience. Their idea for a Gaga pit in a Conshohocken park is all their own. They came up with it themselves, and everything that you are about to hear as far as reasons for it are their ideas. So, take it away, girls.
Hello, my name is Shelby, and I love playing Gaga camp. But when we got back from summer, we couldn't play anymore. So I asked the council, you, if we can have a Gaga pit in our, in Conchi for the whole community to play in.
Hi, I'm Avery. I think one of our local parks should have a Gaga pit because it is a very fun game that gets kids moving and active.
Hi, my name is Natalie, and I think we should have a Gaga pit in one of our local parks because we had a lot of fun, and we think other kids would enjoy it, and we want them to have that experience.
Hi, my name's Willow. I consider having a Gaga pit at one of our Conshohocken parks because everyone loves Gaga, and because everyone loves Gaga, that, that'll, will make the park stand out.
Good evening, my name is Louise, and I think Gaga brings people together with fun, joy, and laughter.
Ladies, it's not easy to stand up in front of a room full of people and be able to do public speaking. So congratulations to all of you to be able to get up and actually advocate for something that's important to all of you. Congratulations to your troop leaders who have given you the courage and the ability to be able to hopefully use this towards public speaking. I think there's a public speaking badge somewhere in the Girl Scouts that you can work towards that. And just so you know, I am still a Girl Scout and very proud how many years later. So you don't just need to be a young girl and be a Girl Scout, you can be a Girl Scout throughout your whole life. And I would recommend that that is probably something you all, as you can see your parents have, are participating in. So thank you so much for that.
One question.
Sure.
Could the borough manager clarify what a Gaga pit is?
Yes. We do have a picture.
For the public record.
Yes, so.
I'm old.
We are going to pull up a picture. So you can see what a Gaga pit is. We actually took the recommendation from the Girl Scout troop. We presented the idea not only to Borough Council, but we also presented it to the Friends of Conshohocken Parks. The Friends of Conshohocken Parks has agreed to assist in funding the installation of the Gaga pit. So this has really become a borough-wide initiative, and it will be installed at either Marywood Park or Suck Cliff Park. We're leaning towards Marywood Park. Our Parks and Grounds individuals are assessing kind of the terrain, and they'll make the final decision. But yes, you can see on the board, it is a game that is played, there is a ball, there is edges, and I think the letters that the girls sent is very indicative of how much fun they have playing the game.
We'd like to know if we get to play.
Definitely could have some adult.
I think just to formalize the whole process for the Girl Scouts who took the time out of doing this, we are going to do an actual motion, if that is okay. And the motion would be to approve the installation per their request in conjunction with the Friends of Conshohocken Parks. Does anyone have any other questions to the Girl Scouts or?
I would, I would just like to say, my daughter is in second grade, and she's a Girl Scout. And when I told her about this, she was pumped. She was excited. So you guys have a lot of public support here for this. So really good job, and really great job, guys. It's a lot of work, and congrats to you as well.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing no other comments or questions, may I have a motion to approve the installation of a Gaga pit at the final location that's recommended by Borough Administration and funded in part through the Friends of Conshohocken Parks?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, ladies. Holly, can we, we're going to take some pictures, if that's okay? Sure. You guys can send some emails.
I'm sorry. It's Dora. 1,100.
Oh my.
Whoa.
1,100.
You've got to have a camera.
Council, come back. We're open for friends.
Always on the side.
Council, please take a step back. Forward.
Forward. Thank you.
Yes.
Remember opening those letters.
I didn't have that many.
Everyone wanted a Gaga.
You're still a Girl Scout.
Yes, I am.
You will always be a Girl Scout. Okay, next up on the agenda, we will be considering approving a proclamation, 2024-01, recognizing the 150th anniversary of Washington Fire Company. With that, Anita, I will ask you to go to the podium and present the 150th anniversary proclamation. And while we're waiting for you to go there, I just want to say, Washies, you did a fantastic banquet for your 150th. I think that the people there were grateful and amazed at the great work.
Thank you very much for coming. Appreciate it.
You couldn't make it any bigger. Okay, forget it, you know, I'm old. Whereas on December 13th, 1873, 38 residents of Conshohocken met to establish a fire company in the borough. A vote was taken to name the fire company, Washington Hose and Steam Fire Engine Company Number One, and the first official meeting of the fire company was held on December 20th, 1873. The fire company was officially incorporated in February of 1874, and whereas, the fire company purchased a clap engine and then a steam engine in March of 1874. Originally, the engine was powered by horses and stored the apparatus in the George Washington Jacoby, I'm sorry, Jocoby residence barn at West Hector Street and Forest Street. The fire company responded from this address until the purchase of land at 15 West Hector Street, where a two-story fire station was constructed and is still in existence today. The fire company moved from 15 West Hector Street to its present-day facilities at 36 West Elm Street in May of 1983, and whereas, apparatus over the years ranged from the original horse-drawn steam engine to 1924 American La France pumper, 1949 American La France 75-foot aerial ladder, a 1974 American La France 100-foot aerial ladder, a 1998 E1 aerial ladder refurbished in 2003, and many other pieces of apparatus over the years. And whereas, one of the first notable fires that the Washington Fire Company responded to was to assist at a fire at Villanova University in a heavy snowstorm, where the newspaper credited the Washington Fire Company was saving the college by going in front of the fire and cutting a hole in the roof. And whereas, over the years, many drivers, engineers, and firefighters have responded to the emergency needs of the borough of Conshohocken, as well as provided community support for many social activities within and outside the borough. The Washington Fire Company proudly continues to provide emergency response and community services to the borough of Conshohocken, and now therefore, the borough of Conshohocken wishes to extend its appreciation to the Washington Hose and Steam Fire Engine Company Number One for 150 years of continuous service proclaimed this sixth day of March of the year 2024.
On behalf of the officers members of Washington Fire Company, thank you very much for this recognition. And thank you again for everybody that came out for the 150th celebration. Never would imagine 150 years later, we'd almost be on the same piece of dirt where it all started with the 38 people, so. And again, thank you for you guys that came to the after-party. But again, I want to thank council, the staff, and everybody for 150 years. Thanks, guys.
So we need to make this official. So do I have a motion to approve proclamation, 2024-01, recognizing Washington Fire Company's 100th and 50th anniversary?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations on such a good achievement. Okay, next up on the agenda this evening is interviews for the Sewer Authority Board. This evening, we have three candidates for interviews. There are a total of four candidates for two positions on the Sewer Authority Board. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Christine Bertino to counsel for interview. Hey Christine, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Thank you for showing interest in being on the Sewer Authority. I guess the first question is, why would you like to be a board member of the Sewer Authority?
I had been thinking about that question all day because I knew you were going to ask that question. Certainly not because the Girl Scouts are going to show up at a sewer board meeting. That would be lovely. But really, it was, I was reading the newsletter that came out from the Sewer Authority, and I had some concerns. I had a lot of questions about changing what I'm going to be paying, and I organized my thoughts, and I, I thought about it, and I felt at the end of my sharing at the meeting, I thought, I can't be just a person who communicates problems. That's not right. I'm a citizen of Conshohocken. I've been a citizen of Conshohocken for pretty much all my life, and I want to be part of the solution. So I'm at a point in my life where that's possible, where I have, you know, I'm getting older, so I don't have as much demands, and I think it's time to give back to the community and be part of a solution.
Great, thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do. How much do you know regarding the Sewer Authority and how it runs?
I know nothing about how a Sewer Authority should run. I have been to a few meetings so that I could kind of get a feel for how the Sewer Authority of Conshohocken works. I have worked in, in a government position years ago, and where I was responsible for, I was an administrative assistant, and I would type up the minutes of meetings that were held by a board. So I have a little bit of background in that regard, and I also work for Verizon, so it's a utility company, so I'm familiar with operations around utilities, things that you have to adhere to because you're in a utility, that there's a public utility commission, that you really go by their rules. And I've been there for 25 years, so I kind of have that under my belt, and I'm a very organized person.
Is there anything that is, would be a priority for you being on sewer board?
I think being more, the website needs to be easier to use by residents to find information. I should be able to look back through minutes of a meeting and feel like I've been at that meeting, and I really know what's going on, so I'm prepared if I want to go to the next meeting. I don't like surprises being a resident, so I think clear communication and transparency is very important. And following, I don't want to say rules, but I'm sure there's rules, there's bylaws of what you have to follow. So if there was, if you were looking for a contractor to come in, a third-party vendor to come in, that there's a process that you would get bids, and those bids would go before the board, like that seems to be normal to me, and in the latest transactions that I've seen, that has not happened. So that would be kind of my first priority to see, like, what are the bylaws? How should things be done? And then how can we work to get it working the way it's supposed to work?
Chris, you mentioned you were interested in the stormwater runoff. I was actually at that meeting in December, and you were, say, somewhat vocal. Have you, have you come around to understand that the stormwater is going to be managed by the Sewer Authority? And how do you feel about that?
I don't have a problem with it being managed by the Sewer Authority. How it's being managed is where I have concerns. My concern is that we are doing a minimum viable solution to meet a requirement and not doing, investing the money into a solution that would benefit both meeting the criteria for the program as well as benefiting the residents of Conshohocken.
Christine, just one thing, you were, I remembered your public comment from that meeting because it was very detailed. Your thoughts were insanely organized. It was really, really good, and more of a statement than a question. Just thank you for stepping up to the plate and wanting to be involved. It's not too often we see that from public comment to be like, "I'm ready, put me in." And that's really something to be applauded for if you go on the board or not, but thank you.
Thanks. Honestly, it's a sad story. I wasn't going to do it. You mentioned it that night that I spoke at your meeting, and I looked at my husband and I said, "I just can't," because I am helping a daughter raise children, and I'm helping my mother who's aging, and then my mom passed away. So I kind of looked at that as her sign of saying that it's okay for me to, to serve. So thank you.
Anyone else?
Logistically, have you seen the schedule of the meetings? Familiar with, you're okay with when they're, when they're scheduled for?
Yes.
Just want to make sure we're covering our bases.
For as good as you can be, planning things in advance. Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Well Christine, thank you very much for coming up and answering our questions, and thank you for putting yourself out there and wanting to be a part of, as you said, the solution and our future strategy. So thank you for this evening.
Thank you for your time, and this guy's really good, too. I made him apply.
Okay, the second interview this evening is Mr. Liam McGuigan. Good evening.
Good evening.
So I will start with the same question, why would you like to be on the Sewer Authority Board?
I've been a resident of Conshohocken for 26 years. I've been involved in a lot of community things that have happened in Conshohocken, and kind of semi-retired now. I have a lot of experience in development throughout the country, dealt with a lot of sewer authorities, a lot of water authorities and so forth. I understand kind of how the process works. I'm looking to help out from a fiscal standpoint and a financial standpoint on how the authority works, because I've been very instrumental in creating affordable housing through about 20 different states throughout the country, and have a lot of time on my hand, on my hands and want to better our community.
Thank you. Counsel, question for Mr. McGuigan?
Have you attended any sewer board meetings?
I was at the meeting on, I believe it was January 17th or the 18th. I found it odd that there wasn't any board members at the meeting. It wasn't, it was the informational meeting with respect to the stormwater takeover.
Any particular issues jump out to you?
I haven't really delved into it. I had a little, some concerns about the, the stormwater takeover, how that was transacted or to be transacted, particularly with a case that's going on right now in the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania, which has not been heard yet. So I think that that outcome could have an adverse effect on what council and the authority is trying to accomplish.
You said you interacted with some sewer authorities before. What type of interactions did you have with them in the past?
Well, I'm a developer of affordable housing, so applications and, you know, a lot of negotiating tab fees and EDUs and so forth and so on, and probably, you know, I've done about 30,000 affordable housing units throughout the country, so pretty in-depth.
Liam, do you know any of the members of the Sewer Authority, either the Sewer Authority itself or the board?
I mean, I know who, I don't know them personally. I don't know them personally, no.
Have you had any interactions with the people who work in this building?
In this building?
Yes.
Current members or previous?
Current members of, that are employed by the borough.
Counsel or employ, oh, I know a lot of the guys on, for the, for the Streets Department and Maintenance Department, so I'm familiar with a lot of them. Previously, I had some dealings with council and the borough manager going back when I was involved in fireworks and, you know, things to that nature, but recently, no.
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. McGuigan? Okay, any questions for us?
When do you guys make the decision, and how's that process go?
So this evening, we'll get through the rest of the candidates, then council will deliberate, and we will make a decision on who will sit on the board, probably at the next voting meeting, which is in March 20th, I think. Yeah, so March 20th, we should be able to have a vote. We're kind of anxious because there's just a three-man board right now, so if anyone is not available, we don't have a quorum, so it is an important thing to get squared away. So thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, and final interview candidate is Mr. Jack Imbler.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Excellent. So I will ask you the same question. Why would you like to sit on our Sewer Authority Board?
Yeah, for starters, I know that you guys needed the applications for it, so I'll say that I started out kind of when I was undergrad, working on public policy. I ended up getting dragged into environmental engineering, and I've stayed working in water and wastewater for since and all of that, so that's like 15 years. I'll say I still have community and water protection at the focus of my interests. I'm working for private companies, you know, a couple of different private companies, so I have a lot of experience in those fields, but, you know, you're always kind of playing an angle or, you know, worried about the company's bottom line, and that's something I definitely want to do for the borough, but also, you know, make sure that we're doing that correctly. We're getting the expertise we need, make sure that there's, that we're getting everything we can out of our wastewater and water assets, as long as we're, we have to get whatever state and federal funding we need for it, and kind of continue making sure that that gives high-quality effluent into the distributing water. So kind of just a general, looking for ways I could help some way in the local governance. I live in the, in the town, so I have a lot of, for only about 10 years, so I'm not, not nearly as long as a lot of people here, but I, just something that I feel like I might be able to contribute to. My engineering background is obviously right in this field, it's certainly where my passion is, so I'll be able to bring in, you know, kind of a lot of experience just for perhaps how other plants are run. I'll be able to understand. I'll be able to understand some of the, maybe some of the technical decisions or help the board, you know, think through some of these technical decisions without necessarily trusting, you know, who's bringing the information to us. I can certainly kind of filter all that out and provide as much of the bottom, you know, line of information as I understand it. So, just hoping I can help out in some way.
Have you attended meetings?
Yeah, yeah, only about three.
What do you feel like you've learned about our sewer authority from those meetings?
I guess I was impressed at the, I mean, it seems like they have to make a lot of decisions, so I was like, it's an interesting spot to be in and I think, you know, people are coming in and working on it from different fields and I think, you know, there's probably a lot of good, um, I, there's a lot of people who know a lot of stuff about business running and, you know, all these other things that I do have some experience in too, but, you know, I just wonder, is there enough, uh, engineering asset in there? That's kind of, that's kind of a little bit how I felt, but again, I've only been to three, so it's hard to know. And it, I just was impressed of like, or impressed or was not expecting the amount of, um, kind of technical detail that was supposed to be understood by everybody on it and, you know, kind of the decisions were having to be made. Um, I guess, yeah, I don't have, I didn't have kind of a greater understanding than I've worked with like, certainly the states and, you know, federal government on these types of decisions and the processes through those, but I was, yeah, kind of interested to see how much there was decisions required at the local level as well for it, so. Yeah, it's kind of, it's what I'm thinking.
Shaq, did you ever serve any, on any other boards, commissions or anything like that, or is this your first kind of foray into?
Not since, not since I was like a high school student, but, um, I mean, I did, I did, um, attend, uh, the EAC meetings for about, uh, maybe just on, it was like a year, year and a half, something like that. I was trying to find, uh, certainly where my passion is, environment, so I was, I was there, I never took the board seats, they seemed to find to fill them all in, but I was attending the meetings and trying to at least see, you know, is there anything, uh, any sort of engineering aspect that I could bring to those groups, just so, that's what I was doing. I, I definitely liked that, uh, interaction. I liked the, when I went to the sewer board, I was like, man, at least this, this is like straight, this is streamlined. They're working directly with the engineer, so it, it had some benefits I saw in the sewer board aspects, although the EAC is doing a great job, so it's nothing, no knock on that at all, just.
Shaq, as a wastewater professional now that the sewer authority is taking over wastewater management, how would you be able to help them with that process?
Taking over wastewater or stormwater management, you're saying?
Stormwater, I'm sorry, stormwater.
Yeah, it was only, Chris was the one who actually was the one who was, uh, informed me of that. I wasn't totally aware of that. Um, I'll say that, uh, that's definitely interesting to me. I mean, I'm happy to, I, I don't know what the other options were, so maybe I should have been more educated on that topic before coming here, but, uh, I mean, it seems like the right group, I mean, it's, obviously there's going to have to be some expansion of their duties, um, but I, I don't have any particular problem with it. I don't, the situat, you know, water transport, water movements, uh, all that stuff, I'm, I feel pretty confident that I can, you know, a stormwater doesn't, we have, some of the projects, we still have to do stormwater aspects of that project, but I'm, you know, much less experienced in that, but I have a fair amount of experience in stormwater as well, so I'd be, you know, I'd be okay with.
Thank you.
At the topic area at least.
Shaq, I got a question just about your availability. It says you work for a company that is a little outside of our local area. Do you work from home?
Yeah.
Or is that something you have to commute to?
So, yeah, I work from home for this company up in Canada. Um, yeah, I don't typically have to do too much travel. Sometimes I do have to go to, um, conferences. I do have a, a son, a young son at the moment, so I'm trying to limit my travel outside of, uh, the state or, um, but I think availability is, I mean, we're not talking more than once a month, so just trying to make sure that I can be around for that time period, yeah, I, I think that's a fair, yeah, using my time. I don't know what the policy is for the call-in. I mean, I think, I would definitely try to be there and, you know, I would definitely think I could be there in person. I don't know if that's a requirement or?
Yeah, I think with COVID, I think that has opened up so many more opportunities and, um, the allowance of being able to have some Zoom attendance.
Yeah.
And the technology is there now, so I, you know, it's not what we want for every meeting, but it, the.
Yeah, right, right, right.
The availability is there to get a quorum, so, um, for sure. Anyone have any other questions? Well, thank you for.
Thank you very much, guys.
Putting your interest in. Thank you to all the candidates this evening. We appreciate, um, anyone who wants to put themselves out there and, and as I said, we will make the decision on March 20th and, um, look forward to having a new crew on the sewer authority board, so thank you, everyone. Okay, next up on our agenda this evening is, um, under land use matters, public hearings and ordinances. We're going to review, um, and amend a prelimin, uh, I'm sorry. We're going to have a review of an amended and preliminary final land development plan for the 401, 433 Washington Street KRE acquisition project. This was subject to the October 22nd, 2014 settlement agreement and, um, I will turn this over to Mike Peters to introduce our applicant and, um, remind Borough Council that this project is, um, from a settlement agreement and a court stipulation, so we will, um, turn it over to Mr. Peters.
Uh, thank you very much. You are exactly correct. This project started back in 2014. Uh, the approval at that time through court-ordered settlement was a, uh, project with 598 apartment units. Throughout 2022 and 2023, we worked with KRE, the current applicant, um, to improve the project, particularly, um, with respect to emergency management and also the quality of the product. That was memorialized in a settlement agreement dated March 8th, 2023, which the court approved on March 24th, 2023. Um, KRE is back with a slight revision to the plan. Um, it's one that reduces the number of units by 117, down to 481 units. Two of the four buildings would be turned into condo buildings and otherwise KRE, um, as they'll explain tonight, is committed to honoring, um, the commitments they made to the borough back in 2023. So with that, I'll turn it over to their attorney, Ed Murphy, who can introduce his team.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, I'm Ed Murphy. I'm here tonight, as I have been previously with KRE. To my immediate right is Noah Crismer from KRE. Noah is the Director of Entitlements for KRE and, uh, as Mike said, uh, we are approaching the 10-year anniversary of the original settlement agreement with, uh, the prior developer of the site and we are also approaching the one-year anniversary of the First Amendment to that original settlement agreement that was done March 8th of last year. A plan that Noah and our consultants will describe to you tonight, uh, represents another, I think, quantum leap forward in improving the quality of the plan and the experience for those that are going to occupy the units. As Mike said, the, um, KRE has introduced to the project a joint venture partner who is going to, uh, participate with KRE and they are going to construct for-sale condominium units. KRE is going to retain, uh, the option to, uh, and move forward with the development of the apartment units that were originally contemplated. So, uh, besides reducing the total number of unit count dramatically, uh, we're also going to increase the spectrum of those opportunities for, uh, those that can reside either in an apartment or purchase, uh, a condominium in the, uh, facility. And as Mike also said, we're going to retain all the other lifestyle amenities that were introduced in the plan a year ago that did not exist in that original plan. So, uh, we think that every time we take another look at the plan, it gets better and hopefully you guys will all agree. Uh, so I think what Noah would like to do is just do a high-level comparison between the plan that was approved a year ago, uh, and what we're proposing now, we understand tonight, is the workshop opportunity for everybody to discuss it and then, uh, hopefully a more formal vote would be forthcoming later in the month. So, I think with that background, I'd let Noah pick it up from here and show you the significant differences between the plan.
Thanks, Ed.
Oh, right on time.
Timing.
Thank you, Paige.
Yeah.
That was very dramatic.
We were just waiting for you.
I filibustered.
On the edge of our seats.
That makes it so much easier.
Thanks, Jeff. Ed, thank you. Um, I guess I'll, I'll start here and then I'll get up and move the slides around. I'll just go page down. Okay. So I, I should say, first of all, um, I'm joined by Jeff DiMiraldo, um, Tom Bauer and Rick Roseberry, uh, respectively, our architects, landscape architect and civil engineer here. So I was going to do just a brief overview, reintroduce myself. I recognize many faces on the council, obviously, from last year and President Sokolowski, thank you for having us, and the rest of the council, thank you. But I, and then I was going to run through the plan and if there's any real technical questions, uh, we have our professionals here to, to help with those technical questions as well. So, again, I'm Noah Crismer. As Ed said, um, I'm the Director of Land Planning and Entitlements. Hopefully, uh, folks remember us and me from when we first brought our, our First Amendment here, which we thought was a upgrade to the previous plan from 2014. I think, um, council might remember that we made some significant improvements to the public access and to the public spaces, to the river park, um, complied with the flood plain ordinance here in town, uh, provided for emergency services plans. And our plan today, as you'll see, changes none of those things, um, i- if only to the positive. So, uh, as Ed mentioned, uh, this was 2014, then 2023, um, and, uh, in the course of the last year, we've had the pleasure of working with, um, Polte, who is one of the most reputable home builders in the country, um, uh, to partner with them on how we could accomplish what we'd like to do on this site and what the borough would like to see, which is a site cleaned up, a site environmentally cleaned up, um, and a project in keeping with the settlement agreement, though now, uh, with a reduced unit count. We have entered into an agreement with Polte. As everybody here knows, I think we have closed on the property, um, did so about six months ago. We have begun the environmental remediation and also the demolition of the building began, uh, yesterday, actually. So we're making progress there to get that site cleaned up, um, making that Washington corridor a lot better. And so before I run through the, the plan real quick, I just want to sort of run through a couple of the numbers, so you have in the back of your head, uh, what we're looking at when we look at the plan here. Buildings five and six are apartment buildings, pretty consistent with the previous plan and I'll show you a comparison slide between them. And then buildings one through four, those four condominium buildings take place of two apartment buildings that were there. So there used to be basically four donuts on this site. The two front donuts now have become the condominium buildings. And again, I'll show the, the comparison. But the numbers, I think, to keep in mind, um, 598 units in the previously approved plan, 481 units in this plan. Uh, there were 804 bedrooms in the previously approved plans. There are 690 bedrooms now, so a reduction in the overall unit count and a reduction, a corresponding reduction in the bedroom count. The heights have remained relatively consistent. They both are just north of about 60 feet to the normal parapet with some architectural features going up and down within that range, um, but consistent with the previous plan as well. Um, the impervious coverage has come down somewhat significantly. It used to be 70%, it's now 66% as a result of the condominium buildings having a green space in between those four buildings. Parking, while the unit count has come down by 117 units, parking, uh, we've remained robust. We had 743 parking spaces before and we now have 707. So still a parking count that's going to accommodate the residents here on site. Uh, and lastly, and we'll talk about this at the very end, um, the one difference that we do want to talk with you all about and that we've worked with Ray and Stephanie on is the setback. Um, we had a 15-foot setback from Washington before. We are requesting a 12-foot setback, which by the way, is consistent with the buildings and we've walked through this with the borough, uh, staff, engineers and planners, consistent with Riverwalk and Londonberry and their setback. However, I think that what you'll see, uh, in the last slide is we're going to propose a much nicer treatment there. We understand, uh, from Ray and from Stephanie that, um, there's been, you know, that street is going to get a little busier with the, you know, the addition of our project, with some of the townhomes down the street, with Davis Bridle maybe becoming apartments, um, and that there, the sidewalk has been somewhat of an issue with folks having to step off of the sidewalk into the street, which as it gets busier is going to become more dangerous. So, we have a solution to that that we think, uh, will be lovely, uh, and also safe and we'll, we'll show that at the end. So those are the numbers, um, and let me just walk through the plan comparison real quick. So this is the plan, uh, that we're proposing now and this is the comparison. So we thought this was a helpful slide. On the left is the plan that was approved last year in the 2023 settlement agreement and on the right is the plan that we are asking for approval with this most recent amendment. And I think as you can see, the fundamentals of the plan have remained entirely consistent. Uh, all of the access points for the plan remain the same. Uh, you have the internal sort of cross-shaped driveway around the roundabout. You have the public space with the differentiated pavers there. You have the public access to the river. The river park, as you can tell, has not changed at all. So overall, very consistent in terms of this, how the site is organized, how access is done, um, emergency services, no change there, um, and public space and public access to the river unchanged. The, uh, I mentioned the flood plain earlier. We have met with, uh, the borough's flood plain administrator. We've sat with all of the, the borough professionals. We are, will comply with all the review letters that we've gotten, uh, and have confirmed, uh, most particularly with flood plain administrator, that we comply again, uh, with this plan.
Uh, can, in the original, where I think it's, let me see, buildings one and two, um, would those have been entirely closed-off buildings that basically the public wouldn't have had any access to the space?
Those were being closed off and, uh, and the in, inner courtyards there that you see, you could kind of see the parking there, it was all paved.
Mm-hmm.
So now, this is a green space, whereas before it was a donut with a hole and it was paved and it was car parked.
And the public could walk through that green space if they needed to, or was that something that would be like fenced off?
So I, I don't know if we're proposing fences there. I think it is a, a semi-private space between the condominiums. The majority of the public, and remember, um, we're, we're going to have a sign there as a result of the conversations that we had with both this council and the board in White Marsh, uh, the majority of the public access, we envision coming down the central spine of the site there. Before I move off of this and talk a little bit about the architecture, if anybody has any other questions about the plans. I'm happy to come back to them. There we go, okay. So this is a, a rendering of one of the, well, all four really, but most prominently, one of the Polte condominium buildings. Um, and what was very important to the borough and to us was that Polte adopted the architecture that this board had previously reviewed and approved. So, we have a consistent color palette, we have a consistent materials palette, um, with paneling and the corrugated, we have the consistent palette on the ground floor with the openings in the parking areas and then the green up along those openings. And so Polte went to great lengths, um, actually, to produce buildings that were in keeping architecturally with what this board had previously approved. So that's what you're seeing here, uh, in front of you here. Happy to ask, answer any questions on that, but by and large, the reason for this slide was to just show conceptually, we have stuck to the architecture that this board presumably, uh, liked before and it's consistent. We're going to have a consistent architecture between the condominiums and the apartments. These are the apartments. As you can see, consistent, you've got the wood look, you have the panel look. This is on the interior of the, uh, of the circle there. No change to the apartment building.
And each corner building looks like that, so they.
So the, the condominium buildings don't all have that treatment there because they are a little bit more of a, of a, um, a rectangular building, but they all relate to each other around the circle and, uh, entrances are all sort of oriented toward the interior of the site. Okay, um, this is the slide that we wanted to show for the sidewalk here. So this is the setback. Um, as I said, we had 15 feet before, we're now requesting 12. Um, we showed just a couple, uh, of the buildings down the street, obviously, Londonberry, Riverwalk, they are respectively essentially 12 feet, a hair over 12 feet and 12 four. We think the issue with this, um, we think 12 feet is well enough, um, to keep pedestrians safe. The issue with how they did it down the street. safe. The issue with how they did it down the street is that they've got the the foundation plantings coming out three, four foot there and eating up a lot of the sidewalk and pushing pedestrians out toward the curb line. So, one, we'd like to be consistent with that street front, but we'd like to do, we hope, a little bit better job with the with that sidewalk. And here, our landscape architect, Tom Bauer, put together a couple different options. So this here is, oh, I shouldn't say options, drawings. This is what we're proposing. It's 12 feet. We have foundation plantings, but they're limited to about five feet, I think, here, four feet, three, six. And then beyond that, we have sidewalk from the foundation planting to the curb, but we've put tree wells in going down along. There's there's no on-street parking that needs to open their doors here or anything like that. And we think that adding the tree wells along the curb line is gonna route pedestrians more down the sidewalk and keep a little bit of a buffer from the cars. We opened it back up after the tree wells, but by and large, we think that that strip there where we would have a nice planting decorative trees and those tree wells, should we think buffer the pedestrians a little bit better than maybe what's happening down the block a little bit? So this is, we've talked to Ray a little bit about this. Ray wanted as much sidewalk as we could have, and I think here we have about eight foot from the inside of the face of curb to the foundation planting, which is a wide sidewalk, and then we just periodically have the tree wells there to buffer that, be something visual for both pedestrians and cars.
The sidewalks are brick?
I...
If you don't know yet.
Yeah, so the sidewalk, are we gonna have bricks? Yes.
And is that part of the HOA responsibility for maintaining that or part of the development just because brick, you know, can fail?
We will maintain that. And if you bring me, you skipped ahead...
Sorry.
...to my, the number five here that I have after I get through the plans, and that is that in our sort of partnership, as we call it, with Polte, this plan has a subdivision where their, the area around their buildings are subdivided and carved out. We have already prepared a decoration of reciprocal adhesments, and the apartment owner, KRE, will be responsible for all the common spaces and will then build back the HOA. We think that's a better format to have. We've done that in other jobs where we have done an apartment component, and there has been a for-sale component. Nothing against HOAs, nothing against the good folks at Polte, but having a single owner whose job across Pennsylvania and New Jersey is to manage properties in an excellent, in Class A fashion, to have us be in control of the snow removal, the garbage, fixing the bricks, fixing any landscaping that goes down, taking care of the River Park, we think that's a better format. And then we will build the HOA back. So the apartment owner will be responsible for that. Lastly, the final thing was something that I think Mike mentioned, and that is that though the unit count has been reduced, though the impervious coverage has been reduced, we are maintaining our commitments for the impact fees as is from the settlement agreement. We're not looking for a pro-rata reduction. And that's all that I have. But happy to take questions, and if there are technical questions, please.
Council, any questions or technical questions?
Yeah, I do. So an issue that we're looking at in this borough is overbuilding. So if I'm a, if I'm a community member, explain to me why this amended application is better for the community. I know you went through a lot of technical details, but maybe a summary here.
Absolutely. So I think it's better for a couple reasons. Number one, we haven't, we have reduced the unit count and reduced the bedroom count. So less congestion, less units, less overbuilding, as you say. At the same time as we've done that, we haven't tried to back off of any of the commitments that we made to the township monetarily. And so those two things together, less impact, but not backing off of our commitments under the settlement agreement, I think are good. And then the last thing I would say was a little more qualitative, is that 598 apartments, we always look at our apartment renters as folks who might want to then sort of get to know a community and then maybe put down roots. Here, you're introducing a product which, in, you know, largely two beds, most of the condominiums, we think provides already a nice avenue for entry-level, younger folks for retirees who are maybe empty nesters and wanting to stay in the community and be around their kids and grandkids. So having that for-sale option here, I think, mixing that up with the apartments, I think is a good thing for the community. You're gonna get folks who are owner-occupied in their units staying in the community, young couples coming into the community who maybe are just now starting a family and just need a two-bedroom condominium. So those would be my main reasons for why this might be a benefit to the community.
I do have another question, and maybe more for the lawyers. If if Borough Council was to vote no, vote against this amendment, what would happen next?
The developer would be able to proceed under their current plan, which has 598 apartments.
Okay.
It's already been approved by the court.
Okay.
Yep.
And to that point, how do we go from that plan a year ago to this plan, and we're gonna use the same vehicle this time that we did the last time, and that is, we're gonna propose, and I'm gonna probably send it to Mike tomorrow, a proposed second amendment to that original stipulation from 10 years ago that incorporates all the specifics in the plans that you and your consultants have already reviewed, and presumably, if Mike reviews it and is comfortable, we would be in a position to have that acted upon on March 20th as well. So it's gonna be almost a mirror image of what we did a year ago, to go from that plan to this plan.
What was the driving force that made you think about changing from four apartment settings to owner-occupied?
To be honest, it's sort of somewhat of a councilman's question, is 598 apartments. I will say Concha Hockin, as we, so I live in Philadelphia, so I'm very familiar with Concha Hockin, but most of the folks in our office live in New Jersey. And so we did a lot of due diligence on Concha Hockin and what the market was. This community is one of the strongest suburban communities, if not the strongest suburban community around Philadelphia. It's a place where everybody wants to live. If there are, there are office buildings here that are fully leased. You don't find that in any, you don't find that in Horsham, you don't even find that in King of Prussia. Like, this is a place where people want to be, both to work and to live and to play. And so we were very attracted to that. We saw all of the apartment buildings go through COVID, losing almost no occupancy, and said to ourselves, boy, this, so this, that was an indicator of a strong market. So we felt good about 598 apartments, but at the same time, it is a lot of apartments. That's a big apartment job. And having a partner alongside of us of the quality of Polte, offering somewhat of a different product, we thought was gonna make a more successful project.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, thank you for the thoughtful presentation.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
So there's no vote on this this evening. We will vote on it on the 20th.
And we will, to Ed's point, we will have prepared for council and your packet what that amendment would look like for your next...
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is to consider adopting ordinance O3 2024, amending the borough's fire services ordinance to add the appointed position of fire captain to the authority as it applies to fire, fire services in the borough. Mike Peters will review the ordinance and the advertisements for us.
To remind Borough Council, we discussed this a couple times at your last two meetings, this would add the position of fire captain between the positions of battalion chief and safety officer. You authorized advertisement at your voting meeting in February. It has been advertised, and because it's been advertised for this evening, it is, it is ready for a vote this evening. And again, while it has a few sections, what it does is accomplish adding in the position of fire captain between battalion chief and safety officers.
Any questions from council? Okay, hearing no questions, could I have a motion to adopt ordinance O3 2024, amending our borough fire services ordinance to add the appointed position of fire captain to the hierarchy of authority as it applies for the fire services of Borough of Concha Hockin?
You'll make that motion?
Oh, second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any one opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is presentations. So this evening, we have a couple swearing ins. The first of the evening will be swearing in of a new code enforcement officer, and I will ask Mayor Aronson to go to the podium, and Caitlin Welding, Wendling, sorry, please come up to the podium.
While they're getting that together, Caitlin's credentials are, she has a bachelor's degree from Westchester University. She is International Code Counsel, ICC certified in property maintenance and housing inspections.
Aye, state your name.
Caitlin Wendling.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
Obey and defend...
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge...
And that I will discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Thank you. Congratulations, Caitlin, and welcome to the borough family.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we will be swearing in a fire captain. Doctor, or Mayor Aronson will be doing the swearing in. May I have Megan Klosterman please come to the podium? Megan's credentials, she served as a part-time firefighter and EMT for the Borough of Concha Hockin starting in June of 2021. She was hired to full-time firefighter for the borough in January of 2023. She is our first female full-time firefighter in our borough's history. She is ACT 120 certified police officer, and that was from 2017 to present. She's also a volunteer firefighter since 2013, and she is an emergency medical technician certified since 2015.
Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Megan Klosterman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
Obey and defend...
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties...
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations, Megan. We're proud to have you grow in our borough.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we're gonna have a presentation on a proposed Flyers alumni walk-run-ride event in June of 2025. Mr. Brad Marsh, our Vice President of Community Development and the President of the Flyers Alumni, please come to the podium. How are you, sir?
Very good. How are you?
Good. So we're excited to hear about what you are going to present.
Well, I'm excited to be here to present it, so thank you very much for the opportunity. As you said, I am Vice President of Community Development for the Philadelphia Flyers, which me and a whole bunch of other people within the Flyers organization look after everything that happens away from the rink. So that's why we're excited to be here, because we love being in communities. Our Flyers alumni, which I'm president of, and I played with the Flyers back in the 80s, for looking around for old-time hockey fans here, but, there we go.
I have your picture.
Okay. Anyhow, our Flyers alumni, we are one of the most active and proactive alumnis in all of professional sports. We pride ourselves in making a difference in the community. We are registered 501(c)(3) and have been since 1984. We do a number of events throughout the calendar year. They're listed, I don't know.
I would just...
Oh, wait. I thought I was gonna have the power.
Do you have the power?
No, no, I don't like technology. Anyhow, we do a number of annual events, a Hall of Fame weekend, which just concluded in the end of January, which we inducted Mark Recky into the Hall of Fame. It was a great weekend. We have a pretty fun event, which is actually this Friday, called Friday Night Fights, where we bring back all the old Flyer tough guys and show their videos on the big screen, and it is a lot of fun, especially for the longtime Flyer fans. And of course, we have a golf tournament. We have a fantasy camp, and we're gonna get into the pickleball world. I bring all these events up just to show that we are used to planning and organizing and running our own events. But the most important thing about all those events that we do, we have a number of charitable initiatives in which we raise a heck of a lot of money, and we love giving it away. Ed Snyder Youth Hockey is an unbelievable organization, and we have supported them for a long, long time. They do so many great things, but basically, we support them to say thank you to Mr. Snyder for all the things that he's done. We have a Christmas campaign, which is, which is really cool. We give some significant dollars to smaller, lesser-known charities, if you will. I'm an avid bike rider, and our bike campaign for, that, we purchased adaptive bikes for disabled children. It's just a wonderful, wonderful atmosphere when we show up with an adaptive bike and a, and a young child gets on it and actually rides for the very first time because of their disability. It's, it's pretty emotional. We, we oversee and organize and fund hockey programs for disabled veterans that started in 2018 and has grown into, it is the top warrior program in the United States right now. There's 39 warrior programs, and the Flyers Warriors, it is the best program, and it's just a joy to be around these veterans. And we also have a wellness, alumni wellness initiative in which, unfortunately, some of our alumni have fallen on tough times or hard times, if you will. So part of the monies that we raise goes into this wellness initiative, which we have a medical concierge program, form of behavioral health program, form of scholarship programs for their kids, and so on and so on. And so, once again, I bring up the events that we do, and I just wanted to point out that all those events that we do goes to putting smiles on kids' faces and families' faces, and then we get a real kick out of giving back to the community. I guess we go to the next slide. And the key about our alumni is we're very coachable, as we wouldn't have made it as far as we did if we weren't coachable. And we're a big believer, yes, I mentioned, that we organize and plan our events, but big believer in bringing in people that know what they're doing. We've done a number of events. I've known G4 Productions for a long, long time, and they have helped us plan and organize a number of our events throughout the year, and they are already on board. They have the states circled on their, on their calendar, so they'll be a big part in not only helping us as alumni organize the event, but working with the city, or with the borough here, and working with the police, the fire, and so on and so on for road closures and all that. They have an unbelievable amount of experience, and they're the key to the success of many of alumni events. Flip her over. So the concept is, as I mentioned, I'm a big bike rider. I go on all kinds of bike riding events throughout the calendar year. And the concept here is quite simply to create an atmosphere, not only for Flyer fans or hockey fans, but for the community and like-minded people or healthy-minded people that can come out and participate in a family event. We'll have a, we'll have a walk. We'll have a run, a 5K run, 5K walk. But we're also gonna add a bike component to this event. Flip her over. So the concept is, as I mentioned, I'm a big bike rider, I go on all kinds of bike-riding events throughout the calendar year. And the concept here is quite simply to create an atmosphere, not only for Flyer fans or hockey fans, but for the community and like-minded people or healthy-minded people that can come out and participate in a family event. We'll have a walk, we'll have a run, a 5K run, 5K walk. But we're also going to add a bike component to this event. In the past, we've done just a walk and a run. As I've mentioned a couple of times now, I'm an avid biker, so I got to put the bike ride in. And I'm looking forward to riding my bikes in the hills around Concha Hawkins. So the concept, like I said, is very quite, it's quite simple. We're going to create this great family atmosphere. We're going to bring the Flyers and the Flyers alumni to Concha Hawkins. We have a huge caravan that goes, that happens during the offseason, if you will, where we go to communities all around the Delaware Valley. We'll be bringing that caravan here. We'll be bringing all the toys, if you will, from the Flyers, all our inflatables and interactive games, and of course, Gritty will be here, along with about 60-plus or minus alumni will be here. So the concept, I'm specifically talking about the one-day event, but it's going to fit into newly-created alumni weekend. I mentioned the Hall of Fame weekend we had during the hockey season, but our alumni wants to create an alumni weekend, if you will. And so, the Sunday that we're talking about is just one part to this whole alumni weekend. On the Monday, we'll take the golf course and we'll have our annual golf tournament. But the headquarters for our alumni weekend will be right here. We've already reached out to West and Maine. I've got, I don't know how many rooms they have there, but we have a whole bunch of rooms on hold there, if you will. And of course, a longtime reporter for the Flyers owns Concha Hawkins Brewery, so I've already contacted them, and they're in, if you will, if I may say that. So anyhow, the concept is, is we're bringing Philadelphia Flyers here, Philadelphia Flyers alumni here. This is our headquarters for a great family event. And I've mentioned it to a few, obviously, our board knows about it, but I've mentioned it to a few guys, and they like nothing better than getting together and reminiscing, if you will. So we can go to the next slide. I kind of mentioned everything on the next slide here, but basically, we'll have several events leading up to the actual day. And we'll have various meet-and-greets, a couple watch parties, et cetera, et cetera. And then, on the day itself, you know, there's the, it just starts early in the morning with packet pickup, and all these Flyer fans, if you will, will converge on Concha Hawkins. And I've already mentioned everybody that's going to be here. So there's going to be lots of activities in and around the Saturday and the Sunday. And then we'll leave town Monday morning to go play golf, so. The next slide just has a couple of potential things that we could have. I already mentioned the restaurant and the pub crawl, or watch parties, if you will. The good thing is, is everybody likes our team right now, so it's easy to have a watch party. Last couple of years, they didn't go very well. And so, there's a whole bunch of things. Once we get confirmation that the event is a go, then we put our thinking caps on and start planning for the activities that would go in and around, not only the day of, but leading up to the day. And the event information, it's hard to say how many participants that we would have, but we'll do a budget up with around 1,500 participants participating in the various events. And of course, that's participants and plus their families, and the autograph towns that come out to get the autographs of the various alumnis. And so that's about it, really. The cycling, I've mentioned, as I said, I mentioned this to a few people, and there's a lot of interest in a cycling event, leaving here and going out to wherever G4 plans the route. We'll have different routes, we'll have a family bike ride, a medium bike ride, and a longer bike ride. We're not sure how long it will be just yet, we'll let G4 map it out, but I kind of say the longer the better, because as I've said a couple of times, I like riding my bike. The timeline, this isn't etched in stone that is up there. Obviously, once we start working with everybody here, the various departments, we'll zero in on what would be the best time to start and finish to maximize the downtown businesses and all that. No sense starting at 6 o'clock and we're done at 10 o'clock type of thing. So we'll work with everybody, and we'll see exactly what the best time is. And if you say this is the best time, then away we go. And obviously, the bike ride would have to start a little earlier, just because of the distances involved. But the idea would be have everyone kind of finishing at the same time, so we can have a great, I'll call it a party afterwards, or a celebration, or awards ceremony, or whatever. But that's, like I said, the tentative timeline, but we'll zero in on the best time to suit everybody, once we get to that point. And that's it.
Thank you. Are there any questions on the presentation?
I actually have one. Why Concha Hawkins? Where did you guys come up with the idea? Well, by the way, actually, you have a very, a member of your organization, who's my next-door neighbor, who does equipment management for you guys for a number of years. So other than him.
Who's that?
Huggie.
Oh, Huggie.
Yeah, 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 he's well-known. I, what was the reasoning behind Concha Hawkins?
Well, I'm from Canada, and I moved back a little bit ago. My wife's from here, and we live on the Jersey side, for full disclosure. And when I came up with this idea, we did a walk-run a couple of years ago up in Washington Crossings Park. It was a fundraiser for the Warrior hockey team, the veterans, so it was kind of neat to have it there because of the historical connection. I got in a lot of trouble because it was canceled, but postponed last year because of the smoke from Canada down. I had nothing to do with that. So when I wanted to revisit that, we took this summer off when we wanted to revisit it, and I told the people that I work with, within the Community Development Department, that this is what I want to do. We want to go to a small community. We want to bring our Flyers and alumni and all the great things that we do to a small community. And talking to the people around the table, to almost every person said Concha Hawkins is the place to be. And so, we drove through it before we contacted and reached out, because I, full disclosure, I've had a few beers at the various pubs in here, but I haven't spent much time here. So we drove through it, and I asked a bunch of questions, and because, as I said earlier, we want to come in, and I don't know if takeover is too strong or the wrong, but we want to come in and Flyers and alumni, we want to take over your town. We want the caravan to go through the streets of your town, but we want a community that's going to rally around the Flyers, and we can rally around that community.
Anything else?
Can I just get you on record while you're here, confirming that Gritty will be here?
It's in his calendar.
Okay.
Gritty's a busy man.
ITS.
And that's, that's one good thing about our team being better, is people are starting to ask for player requests now, not just Gritty. Yeah, Gritty likes these kinds of things, and he's a wonderful addition to the Flyers.
Absolutely, yeah, thank you.
I do have a, so from the charity side, what's your goal on an event this size? How much money you expect to bring in for the charities?
Well, I haven't done a performer yet, and a lot will depend on sponsorship, but we're looking at six figures. I don't know if that's fair to say, or if you want more, I know six.
No, no, no.
It's a big range.
I was going to have two questions, how many people you would expect, which you said in here 1,500.
Yeah.
But then I was looking at what kind of dollar amount that generates.
Well, the one thing that our alumni, how we operate, we're different than most charities, and our goal is to put on a great event, invite as many alumni as we can back to that event, because we have 60 alumni here, they don't live locally, they're coming in from all over, all over North America, and if we get a European to come over, then we do. But, and so to put on our events is a big dollar bill, but that's what we want to do. So when the participants or fans or whatever come out, they're going to have one heck of a time because of what we put out. And so, the way we look at it, whether we make $10 or $15, the most important thing is, we're okay with making $10, because everyone's going to have a good time, and all our alumni are back at that event. So, but even saying that, we anticipate this to be a strong six-figure event. One of the charitable groups that we've worked with is Team Foster, is anyone aware? So we just, along with Cam Atchison from the Flyers and Coach Tortorelli, we went together, and we just purchased a dog from Team Foster for one of our Warrior players. That's a wonderful group there, so I've known them for a long, long time, so. So anyhow.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for the presentation, it's exciting.
Well, thank you, and I look forward to hearing from whomever.
So there's no vote tonight, but on the 20th, we'll have an official vote, and then we'll be able to let you know how it goes.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up on the agenda is a presentation on our Sutcliffe Park Trail renovation project and the Sutcliffe Park Stormwater PRP project, and I'll invite Karen McNair, our Borough Engineer, to discuss that with us.
Thanks for having me here tonight. I'm here to talk about these two projects that are scheduled for construction in 2024, which is the trail reconstruction in Sutcliffe Park, and then the MS4 Stormwater Project. Could you go to the next slide, please? So this first slide shows a couple of the different trail conditions that are throughout the park. You can see that the existing trail around the park, which was originally constructed in 1998, so that's about 25 years old now, consists of varying levels of deterioration, I'll say. You have some disturbance from age naturally, but also tree roots, and it's causing settling, cracking, upheaval, and water ponding. So all of that is just continuing to deteriorate this trail. The trail, you have a central walking path, that's about 0.7 miles long, and then some smaller trails in the park as well. So this is a slide that shows you where the existing trails are, which are in green, and some new paths that we're adding. So we're adding a new pedestrian connection from Colwell Lane, you can see that in red off on the left side of the screen, and also a path in from the intersection of Wood and West 9th Avenue. We're also adding a section that goes along the rear and outfield of the baseball field that's closest to that Sutcliffe Lane, or the Sutcliffe Park access road there. We are also adding a new trail connection to the playground, and that's to make that an accessible connection from that parking lot, so we're actually shifting it down just to make it accessible. And the other red section on the left-hand side of the plan there is to move the trail around an existing tree, so that we're not having to remove a tree to adjust for some tree roots there. So again, the green is your existing trails, and the red are the new paths that we are proposing. To fund this project, the Borough did seek out some grants and received two different grants. It was $250,000 that was received from the DCNR Keystone Recreation Park and Conservation Fund, and another $60,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority Greenways Trails and Recreation Program. So this slide shows the type of repair. So red is showing areas where we think we need to do total reconstruction, so that's removing the top layer of asphalt, but also the stone that's underneath of it. And that's in areas where we think the trail has just deteriorated to the point where the stone is failing and moving around as well. The green areas are where we think we can do mill and overlay, so that's just taking off the asphalt surface and leaving the stone that's under it. And that's from visual observation from our office, and myself included, of areas where we think the trail's in good condition, so you really don't have a lot of tree root intrusion along those areas, and there's good drainage. So again, we think in those green areas, we can just do a surface treatment there. But when this project would be all done, all the trail areas, red and green, would have a new surface, so it would all be smooth for the new trail. So this slide shows the accessibility we'd be creating. So when I say accessibility, I mean ADA accessibility. So these would be areas where the trail cross slope is 2% or less, and areas where we are designing the slope to be 5% or less. So again, we're adding accessibility from that paver parking lot down to the playground because of the slopes in the park. There are very steep areas, the white areas show, where we don't think we're going to get accessibility. So we can't make the whole part accessible just because of the steep slope, but we are increasing the accessibility, and both of the new connections from Colwell and from the intersection of Wood and West 9th are being made accessible. We're also adding four benches that we're adding an ADA-compliant companion seating area next to, so it'll be a larger concrete path that somebody who would be in a wheelchair could sit next to the bench and join somebody in seating in that area. I'm sorry?
Just the two acre bench areas?
Four benches, yep. Yeah. So since the area of work for the trail reconstruction project is over an acre, the Borough does have to obtain a permit from the Conservation District. And what that permit requires is treating stormwater runoff from all impervious areas, so that's anything that's not grass, basically. So that's the existing trail and any of the new proposed trail sections. So what we're doing to address that is we're adding two rain gardens, which is what's pictured here, one close to Colwell and one close to the bottom of the slope of the municipal yard, and also an infiltration trench that's proposed underneath the path, actually, so we're not disturbing any additional area, underneath the path that's proposed new around that outfield of that baseball field. So to give you an idea of what they look like, this is what a rain garden is. It's just a shallow excavated area that we put in plants that are wet-tolerant and dry-tolerant, so they can help soak up any of the water that ponds in that area. We did do infiltration testing, so we know the soil will infiltrate the water and soak it up, and there wouldn't be any permanent ponding in here, so we don't have to worry about mosquitoes or anything, but the plants help absorb that water, but also create space for the water to get down into the soil. So again, we have two of those proposed. And then this is what an infiltration trench looks like. It's a pipe, we call it a leachy pipe, but there's basically, you just punch holes in the pipe, a perforated pipe, allows water to get inside the pipe, and you put stone around it to allow water to sit in the stone area as well. We wrap it in that fabric, and then we would put the trail on top. It extends a little bit outside the trail, so that the water would flow off the trail into that trench and get under there. Both this and your rain gardens would drain any overflow into the existing stormwater system, so there wouldn't be any overflow that you would see from either of those BMPs. Yeah, yep, it's just not around your home, it's in the middle of the field, yeah. But yeah, the exact same concept. And again, we did confirmation testing here for the soil, so we know that they would be infiltrating, and you wouldn't get ponded water, and they would, the water would go into the ground. Oh, I'm sorry, the opinion of probable cost for the trail reconstruction work is approximately $660,000, and $310,000 of that is covered by the grant, so a little less than half is grant-funded for that. Now I'm going to switch to talking about the Borough's Municipal Separate Stormwater System Permit, which is the permit required by the DEP to allow the stormwaters to discharge the Plymouth Creek and the Schuylkill River. As part of the current permit term, which started in 2018, the Borough is required to develop and implement a pollution reduction plan to reduce the sediment contributions to the Plymouth Creek by 10%. So the area of the Borough that drains to the Plymouth Creek is approximately everything you see in purple there. So anything west of Fayette is almost, the entire area west is going to the Plymouth Creek instead of the Schuylkill River. To reduce the sediment contributions, the Borough needs to construct and ultimately maintain a stormwater management facility. These pollutant reduction plan requirements are in addition to continued compliance with the other MS4 permit requirements, such as public education and outreach, public participation and involvement, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction site runoff control, post-construction runoff control, pollution prevention, good housekeeping, and updating the Borough's Stormwater Management Ordinance comply with the DEP model ordinance requirements. When the DEP added the pollutant reduction plan requirements to the permit, the state did not make any funding or funding sources available to municipalities creating an unfunded mandate. The Borough did reach out to the state directly requesting options for funding sources, but none were made available. I did come before council prior in March of 2018 to present the pollution reduction plan requirements, and then I came back in June of 2018 to present council with the proposed construction of the underground infiltration basin in Sutcliffe Park to address those requirements. The plan was then submitted to the DEP and approved by the DEP in February of 2020. We were We were then subsequently authorized by the Borough to prepare the design of the underground basin to meet the February 2025 deadline set by the DEP for its installation. Uh, so this is a picture of what an underground basin would look like. Um, we're not doing piping that's shown there, but we're doing a plastic stormwater structure that would allow for, um, more space, and then there's stone around it that the water can also store in the stone. Um, the area we'd be doing it is under the multipurpose field that's on the east side of the park. It's approximately shown there. Um, and the idea would be this would get buried, so we wouldn't be taking up any of the multipurpose field. The multipurpose field would be available for use again once the construction was complete. Yes, yes. Uh, the design achieves the required 10% sediment reduction through diverting stormwater from an existing inlet at the West Ninth Avenue and Wood Street intersection, capturing stormwater in a new inlet that would be below the playground area, and directing stormwater in a new swale below the basketball courts into the basin. Our opinion of probable cost for the stormwater work is approximately $1,350,000. I'm presenting these projects together tonight since we're preparing the plan and bid documents as one combined construction project, which the total opinion of probable cost would be $2,010,000. We recommend combining the project since we believe there will be some cost savings from having one contractor perform the work rather than two separate contracts, and believe it will also ultimately minimize the amount of time that the park is impacted by construction. Uh, with the permitting that's required for the contr- trail construction, you couldn't do any other work in the park at the same time. Um, and the underground basin work must be completed first because that deadline is the February 2025. And we also want to keep construction vehicles off that new trail, so you want to, want to do the new trail work first. Uh, the intent is to keep the park open as much as possible during construction, though we do know that we will be directing the contractor to fence off construction areas so that the public wouldn't be entering construction areas. Um, our timeline for this, we'd be coming back at the next meeting to request any authorization to advertise. Um, the idea would then be to advertise in April and do an award, um, contracts in May, hopefully start construction in June. I believe the construction would take five to six months, which would put us into November, December, um, which would meet that February 2025 deadline for the BMP, and your grant deadlines are June of 2025 and then 2026. So we'd be meeting all the deadlines with that, with that schedule. That's everything I had prepared.
Karen, why was this location picked as the first MS4 project?
So we had to have it located within the Plymouth Creek to take the area within the Plymouth Creek. Um, and by selecting this area, we were able to propose one BMP instead of multiple BMPs that would then have to be constructed and maintained by the Borough. So we felt that selecting an area that would allow us to propose one BMP, one maintenance, and not have a long-term impact on the park or require the Borough to obtain any land was the best fit.
So it's $1.3 million of unmandated funding.
Yeah.
Um, and it's basically a drop in the bucket for kind of stormwater MS4 work that's going to be ongoing. What do you see as the next mandate that will be coming through since we're meeting minimum at this point?
Yeah, we're waiting for the new standards. They haven't been issued yet. There would be a notice of intent, I believe, um, due in September from what they're telling us, so we're waiting for the guidelines. But I do foresee this being a continued requirement. Um, I haven't heard of anything additional being added, but I believe the DEP will be continuing to ask for 10% reductions in each five-year permit term.
Do you anticipate anything on the east side of Conshohocken being required at this point?
Not at this time, um, because the Schuylkill River isn't listed as any impairment. Um, so unless the DEP would find something that they need to address in the Schuylkill River watershed, there wouldn't be any requirement for that. Right now, they've just indicated that the Plymouth Creek is where the concentration needs to be. And so that's the only area that the focus is on and where you'd be able to put any BMP.
Thank you. Anyone have any other questions?
Yes, I do. Um, specifically to the basin, why is, why isn't this falling under the sewer authority's responsibility to pay for? If they're gonna, if they are the stormwater management?
Um, I'll answer that. So the stormwater fee that was generated through the consultants, through the, through the sewer authority have this project in their estimate. Um, so the fee, in essence, is going to cover a percentage of this project. That is the whole point of the fee. However, the amount, the 1.3 million, is not going to be anywhere close to covering it through the fee, but it is going to cover a percentage. I believe it comes out to roughly about 25% of the project. So the concept of stormwater management and the DEP unfunded mandates through the MS4 project are built into the fee estimate that is being introduced through the sewer authority. And that was done collaboratively between both of our entities, not just the stormwater management portion of it in terms of operations of the stormwater facilities that exist, but the requirements that are coming down through the DEP with this being this first cycle. So that number and the project was presented to the sewer authority consultant, HRD, when they were developing the fee estimate for the Borough.
So, so the math, then, we're talking about 50% in grants, 20%, 25% in fee?
So the 50% is tied specifically to the trail, not to the basin.
Okay.
So we're looking at 50% of the $660,000 for the trail coming from grant dollars. We did seek grant dollars from the DEP and we received no response. We also requested a time extension based off of the fact that this permit cycle was within COVID and within supply chain issues and rec- and, um, you know, recession, everything that happened during this five-year period, and that also was not granted. Does that answer your question?
Uh, yeah, it, it's an answer.
Well, it's an answer, it's an answer in that it clearly indicates the fact that the fee that was, that's being generated for stormwater management is needed. Um, it is going to have to continue to be evaluated. As Karen stated, we don't know what the next cycle is going to be in terms of what the requirements are going to be through the DEP. So as those requirements that are unfunded come down through the Borough, we will be speaking with our partner, the sewer authority, to determine whether or not that fee needs to be reevaluated. Our hope is that it either stays the same or it decreases, but it could very well increase moving into the future.
Okay, thank you, Karen.
We have a stronger grant team in the Borough of Conshohocken than the Borough Authority at this point. Is that something that we would still help look in the future for grants for that type of work in collaboration?
Well, the, absolutely. It, we have to make it very clear that the stormwater, while it is owned by the sewer authority, we are still the consultant who is operating and managing the stormwater system.
We're also still the, on the MS4 permit. We can't, we can't get pulled off.
If there's any grants, um, just like we're doing with the MS4 where we are co-permittees, there's opportunity, just like we have done in the past with the sewer authority. They have grants that they submit all the time. They need our approval in order to submit it. It would just be vice versa. We are always actively looking at grants. I think if you look at Ms. Stettler's monthly reports, you can see the amount of grants that we're either evaluating and determining whether or not we qualify to submit, um, if we have a need that fits the very stringent requirements of most of the grants. We also have a lot of grant applications that are active. And I think that if you look at the trajectory of the last 10 years, you're looking at roughly $17 million in grant money that has been brought into the Borough over the, the period of time. So that's a significant amount of money that we'll continue to look for, especially for something that's unfunded and such a large expense.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, there's no vote tonight, but we will be voting on this on the 3/20 agenda. A busy voting agenda.
Uh, Council President, the EAC had to unfortunately table their presentation for this evening, um, so they are rescheduled for the 20th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a good presentation.
It's a, it's a, it's a great presentation. There just was a family conflict and someone has the flu, and so we are rescheduling.
Okay. All right, we still have other agenda items, so we'll keep going. Um, next item on the agenda is to consider approving the A Field bid recommendation for the roof replacement project on the Field House. Lauren Irazari, would you please come to the podium and present for us? What? I know. Hi, everyone. How are you tonight?
Um, so tonight I come before you, um, to ask for your approval, um, at the March 20th meeting. Um, back at the budget meeting, um, I had showed you pictures of the A Field building, the deterioration of it, um, inside from top to bottom. Um, it is something that hasn't been addressed, um, and we are at the point now where the entire building needs a complete reconstruction. Um, we worked with a company called The Garland Company, um, who Dan Ingram had first worked with. Um, we brought them in to assess the building and they made recommendations. Um, their recommendation was, after an inspection, a thorough inspection, the recommendation was to start with the roof, which we all figured we would need to. Um, in my capital budget items, I had, um, requested $250,000. Um, based on The Garland Company's assessment, uh, the roof needs a complete reconstruction. There's no more patching it. Um, from the, from the leaks in the roof, we have leaks that are coming down into the locker room, um, into the apartment that's in there. So it's affecting the entire building. So that's what we want to start with first before we move forward and do anything else with the building. Um, The Garland Company i- is making sure that they keep the aesthetics of the building. So along with the roof, there will need to be masonry work. That is included in their scope of work and that was included in the bid that we received. Um, that being said, we received proposals, um, all from CoStar's, uh, CoStar contracted companies. Um, and the one that fell within our, uh, budget and we felt covered the scope of work, um, was MUN roofing. Um, so the recommendation would be to go with that bid, which was $238,000.
Any questions from Council related to the project?
What would be a timeline if this gets approved?
So it would be quickly. Um, once approved on the 20th, they're ready to go sometime after that. Um, it won't take long. Um, they said about five days. Um, all of their, you know, it'll be neatly stored, so when that project's going on, we won't need to shut the field down or anything like that. Um, it, it will happen rather quickly.
Uh, did they know any, uh, concerns with supply chain issues?
No. Um, so The Garland Company actually supplies the materials. And we, we, um, you know, like their materials, we want to go with their materials, um, which is why we went this route. They put together a nice, um, you know, proposal with the scope of work and very detailed. So we were happy with what they did. Um, and then there also is a 30-year warranty for it using their products.
I see, I see that there's a three-year workmanship warranty on it. What does that entail? Like, did they define that exactly, what that, what that kind of means in the sense of what that three years is covering?
Um, as far as that, I don't know. Obviously, the 30-year warranty is the product.
Yeah, that's through the manufacturer.
But yes, so, um, they didn't define that. Sorry, I don't have an answer.
We can ask them to define it.
Yeah, I would definitely get clarification on it for what actually is covered under that three years and what happens post-four years and five years and what the manufacturer supplies relative to the actual labor that's needed.
Yeah, okay, no problem.
We'll have them prior to the 20th. We'll have the contract to provide an explanation for the three-year workmanship warranty.
Okay.
You mentioned that this would be the first step in the, in, I guess, the renovation. What would be the next one?
Um, windows and doors. So when I presented at the budget, um, we hadn't worked with The Garland Company yet. And I did say that we weren't sure what the $250,000 would get us. We knew that it wasn't going, we knew that it was going to be more than that. Um, but after their assessment, um, that's what they recommend next. So the roof, windows and doors. And it could be possible to start with, you know, I mean, the, hopefully, it's, you know, no more than the $238,000, but if there is a little bit left, we can start with possibly a couple. I don't think much, but we'll do what, what we can.
Any other questions?
So just for the, yeah, so this project has, the formal bid documents have gone out um, and because it wasn't authorized and approved project in the capital budget, the bids have been opened and received. The recommendation is in your meeting packet this evening. We'll get clarification on one warranty, and then it will be on your agenda for the 20th to actually award the bid to MUN Roofing, if so inclined.
Thank you.
All right, next up on? Next up on the agenda is manager matters. So at this point, I'll turn it over to you, Steph.
Okay, great. Thank you, President Sekulowski. Um, annually, we have, um, a member from Borough Council attend the Pennsylvania State Association of Borough's Conference, the PSAB Conference. Um, this year Anita Barton will be attending, and we have to select a delegate to represent our interests and if so inclined this evening, so that we can have her registered and send the delegate form in. We're looking for a motion to appoint her as the delegate, delegate for the conference.
So could I have a motion to appoint Anita Barton as our Borough's Voting Delegate for the 2024 Annual PSAB Conference? I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Anita.
Uh, the Sora West project is coming to a close. Uh, the, our Borough Engineer has evaluated the final punch list for the project and the list of outstanding items is complete. Therefore, we have a certificate of completion on file that needs to be signed and processed. And at the same time, we would then release the letter of credit for the entirety of the Sora West project, which is a long time coming, so congratulations on getting to that point. The release, of course, would be contingent upon the developer paying any outstanding legal, engineering or administrative expenses, which right now are around the $3,000 mark, so it's not a huge number to close everything out. And they have already posted their maintenance bond in the amount of $656,448, and that will remain on file for 18 months.
Okay, any questions? All right, with no questions, could I have a motion to authorize the final release of the Sora West Project Letter of Credit in the amount of $956,000, $956,010 and 60 cents, contingent upon the developer paying any outstanding legal, engineering and administrative expenses?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is a discussion on the future use of Borough facilities by the Conshohocken Bears Organization. Um, just to give some quick background on the agenda item, uh, the relationship with the Conshohocken Bears has been going on for approximately the last 62 years. Um, the Borough has provided athletic fields to the Conshohocken Bears, which is a youth football and cheerleading program, which serves youth from ages roughly five to 12. Um, and although the program was always open to Conshohocken youth, the vast majority of participants in the program today are no longer residents of Conshohocken Borough. Um, B Partnership has worked well for roughly 58 of those years, and the last four years we have had some issues. Um, the Borough has fielded numerous complaints from residents concerning disrespectful conduct. The Borough has fielded numerous complaints from residents concerning disrespectful conduct by some adults connected to the Bears program. These individuals have not abided by the rules and regulations we have in place for all organizations that use our fields and facilities. The rules that we ask them to follow are the same reasonable regulations required of every athletic organization that utilizes the Borough's fields and facilities. And it's important to note that we have not had the same issues with other sports organizations on a regular basis. So the complaints range from illegal parking, speeding, profane language, loud music, littering, public urination, fights, and most recently unauthorized use of fireworks. We feel for the last three years that we have attempted to work with the Bears Organization to elicit the type of responsible behavior that we expect and receive from other sports organizations that use our fields and facilities. We do feel that we have given the Bears Organization multiple opportunities to improve its conduct. That has, it has not changed. The conduct has not changed. Mark Benjamin, the president of the Bears Organization, is here this evening. I think it's important to note, especially since we've worked so closely with Mark, that we have enjoyed a positive relationship with you. I hope you know that. I think you, that was made very clear in our last meeting. He has, he's the current president of the Bears. He has personally worked, and I've watched him personally work very hard, to attempt to ensure that the Bears Organization was upholding its obligation to the Borough to the best of his ability. Understandably, Mark, one person is just not going to be able to control an entire organization. And we know that you tried your best, and we thank you for what you've done. Additionally, I know that your kids are getting older, so they're not in the program. He's had to take a little bit of a smaller step away from the Bears and actually on hands management. And quite frankly, we felt your absence. So we could know, we knew when he wasn't there because the conduct was different. And there's nothing you can do about that. I think that you've done everything that you could in your power. And when he wasn't there, kind of the conduct escalated, the poor conduct escalated and returned. So thank you for everything that you did, and it was a pleasure working with you. And I think that the many conversations that we have had and that you've had with Lauren over the years, I hope they know how lucky they were to have you. I think when we're talking about conduct escalating, the unauthorized use of fireworks is one example of decision-making that was made in your absence, one that I know that you don't agree with. And unfortunately, the unauthorized use of fireworks escalates the situation from one of nuisance and negligence to one of health and safety. And that's kind of where we need to draw the line. So fireworks pose a substantial risk of injury or fire, especially considering the A field and the B field are directly located within a residential neighborhood. And if they're not handled by a certified professional, the use of fireworks could result in major damage or injury. And it's a risk the Borough can't take. And Mark, I know you've expressed that exact same sentiment. So based on the conduct from the past four years, at this time, we are not confident that the Bears Organization is capable of meeting the reasonable requests that we make of every sports organization that uses our facilities, especially since they have given, they have been given numerous opportunities to date and have failed to do so. So we have, as an administration, therefore concluded that it's time to end our relationship with the Bears for the time being. And I think that it saddens us to make the decision because it's the youth, it's the kids that participate that are going to suffer because of the conduct of some adults, not all, some. And we've fought really hard as a Borough for the kids who participate in this program over the past four years. But unfortunately, there's a liability that's at stake, and we cannot, we can no longer put our resident's safety and property or the Borough's facilities and the Borough's property at risk. So despite the angst surrounding the decision, after much deliberation, after speaking with Mark, and thank you for coming in, we have, we feel that we have an obligation to recommend that the use agreement with the Bears be terminated at this time. And perhaps in the future, the relationship can be revisited when and if the Bears Organization can demonstrate that they have the ability to responsibly utilize Borough facilities. However, for the immediate future, our recommendation, which is my responsibility to do, is based on the conduct from the past four years, which continues to escalate in terms of liability and risk, is that the use agreement be terminated per the termination clause that is listed in Section 3 of the addendum to the Parks, the Borough's Park Permit Application. And so if there's any questions from council, I will be more than happy to answer them. Mark, I don't know if there's anything that you want to say on behalf of the organization at this time. You're welcome to do so. Okay.
Okay, there is no vote this evening. The vote will be on the 20th's agenda. But what I would do is ask if there's anyone in attendance tonight that has any public comment related to this topic to please feel free to come on up.
Hi, good evening. First off, I just want to, I'm Marlo Domann, by the way, for those of you who don't know me. I think I know most of you, not all of you. And I live in Ward 7, Ralph's Ward, and I'm right across the street from the Field House. And I want to thank Stephanie Checo for inviting me and other residents to come and speak here. I appreciate that. It's an example of responsive government. I am one of the people who's made complaints over the last couple of years because we have a front row seat to the kind of behavior that we deal with from the Bears Organization. Now, you know, I'm going to repeat some of what Stephanie said. I mean, the problem is not the kids. And the kids are fine. It's some of the adults who come and behave like children, or even worse. The behavior is also very different for the Bears games than they are for any of the other football games that take place at the, at the Field House. I think Chestnut Hill College uses it. Some of the Catholic high schools use it. It's not perfect. Some people do things that they shouldn't do, but it's generally not that bad. Just to give you a few examples, my wife was in the B field, the playground there with our three-year-old. Last fall, there was a fight that broke out after one of the games, adults shoving and cursing at each other, looking like they were about to get into a brawl right outside of the A field in front of a playground filled with kids. My wife had to grab our kid and run through the cemetery while calling 911. It was, she was really frightened. There's constant illegal parking going on. We have people parking in front of our driveway, parking in the crosswalks. When I and other residents have approached people and asked them not to park where they're parking, we get extremely rude behavior, people cursing us out. They could literally drive two blocks in any direction, and they would have free street parking. And yet they continue to just do that even though they've been asked not to. Trash being thrown on our lawns, illegal tailgating, people drinking, smoking weed. You know, needless to say, it's a residential area. It's not an eagle's tailgate. It's a link in a parking lot. It's, and we have children too, right? So we don't, we don't really appreciate that conduct. And then the fireworks, which I can say I witnessed from my window. I saw fireworks being shot up from the stadium with a full crowd screaming at the top of their lungs. And it, I mean, the next time that happens, someone could get their hand blown off, if not worse. So, you know, it's created a lot of resentment among a lot of the neighbors, at least who live around me, who have to deal with it. You know, I think there's an impression that there are some people who come in and don't respect us and don't respect our rights, and that we just have to kind of grin and bear it. And I would also like to say that there's also an impression that the police just don't care that much. And in years past, I've heard people say that they see cops come in, they don't do much. They see that cars are parked illegally, they don't do much. This past year, there was an improvement. I did reach out to Chief Lynn, and I got a response. He sent police over, and people were ticketed. So I did appreciate that. But I think that if the Bears were to play here again, there would have to be constant police presence, not, not just, you know, coming by maybe once every few hours. I don't know if police resources exist to do that, not in a place to say, but I think there would have to be a consistent police presence at the stadium. Because, you know, at the end of the day, it's public safety, as Stephanie said. And also, if something were to happen where someone got really injured, the Borough could get sued. There's bad publicity that could happen. There's a whole host of bad things that could come out of that. So I'm happy that no one's gotten that injured yet. And I would, you know, I would say that if it's not possible for it to be safe, then they should probably go find another home. So I hate, I hate that that is the solution that we've come to. I think most of the, I can't speak for everyone, but I would say that the vast majority of people want the stadium to be used. We like that it's being used. I certainly do. If it weren't for the behavior of some of the adults, then I would be delighted for them to be using it. So sorry that we're in this position. Thank you.
Good evening. Mary Tierney. I live at 1016 Harry Street, so also near the A field. And this is really a sad day. And I understand what you're saying, Stephanie. I appreciate that concerns were taken. This makes me very sad. I just think of, from somebody growing up in Conshohocken, what the Bears have meant to all of us. And I hope that, I don't know how this can work, that guidance can be given to, if the decision is that the contract is not going to be renewed, that they can come back. Because as you said, considering the children and the role that it's been, I mean, it just, the Bears, Soapbox Derby, these are some of the seminal things. I think I've, for better or worse, I've missed some of the things that Marlo has talked about. I don't, I haven't really always kept track of which team is playing when there have been incidents. So I don't know if it's been the Bears. I don't think it's been Chestnut Hill. But I couldn't say if it's Chestnut Hill, the Bears, or I think it's Carroll. I have one question. What other teams are using the field? Was it just those three, the Bears, Carroll and Chestnut Hill? I know that you have the Kickball, but in terms of football teams that you have contracts with, are there any others?
We do, yes. We have Archbishop Carroll, Chestnut Hill.
Archbishop Carroll, Chestnut Hill, the Conshohocken Bears, we have Hayday Athletics, we have the Philadelphia White Marsh Rugby Team, the Plymouth White Marsh. Marching Band uses it on occasion. We have camps, specifically red camps and other camps. And then for the B field, we have Aim Academy, again, Hayday Athletics. We have a couple churches that utilize it on a regular basis, and that's just strict rentals. And then when you get into programming, we have yoga, soccer shots, and then some other things that are in the works. But yeah, so there's multiple entities that are always up at the A field and the B field.
I know that. We know that. Thank you. So going with this and for whatever decisions, one of the concerns I had was, as somebody trying to get parking at times, we didn't always know the schedule. I don't know how I found it on Conshohocken. Is it RPS or PRS.reckdesk.com?
It's the Rec Desk site, yes.
Yeah, it's not something easy to find because, as Marlo and I talked about, I was like, what is the schedule anyway? How many games are we talking about? One thing that I would ask, and I did ask Ralph on this one, and you may have already talked about this, making it easier for us to see what's in store. Because regardless whether it's the Bears, other teams, if you're a resident there, you can be kind of trapped if you give up your parking spot. You know, and it's just good for planning, for groceries, if you have family, whatever on that one. I agree with some of the concerns. And again, I can't say whether it was the Bears or other schools because I didn't keep track of what team was playing. I did see, I've almost got a contact high walking my dog with somebody in a car having the healing herb or whatever. And, you know, like I said, I don't know if it was Bears or somebody else. One issue with very loud noise, the music and profanity on the music. I know that I called Colleen, and it was supposed to be prohibited by the contract anyway. She got in touch with rec services. I didn't hear the scene after that, but honestly, a lot of the times, I had my air conditioning on. I guess I didn't know that the recommendation was going to be against renewing the contract, and I appreciate the reasons that you gave. If that is going to be the decision, I just, I really hope there's thought and process and suggestions that can be given to the Bears to bring them back if the decision is that it's not going to be renewed for this year. Because for 62 years, if you know anybody who's been in this town for a period of time, probably they, a family member, either played for the Bears, coached, whereas involved in cheerleading. It's been such a huge thing, and I, I'm not disputing that you worked with them. I understand that. From your perspective, it's been many years. And I certainly appreciate you taking residents' concerns into consideration. I just really hope there's a path in the future, if the decision is not to renew, to bring them back. Because I just find this a very sad day for all of us.
I think that, so we have worked closely with Mark. And I, there was presidents before Mark that were not as involved or dedicated or engaged as Mark has been. And so we have given guidance. We have given what we felt were reasonable regulations to follow, and they haven't been followed. So at some point, there has to be a tough decision made. I don't think that, you know, we're, I know from my perspective, I was the direct beneficiary of growing up with athletics and participation in sports and kind of what that did. So I don't, knowing Mark, I don't think he's going anywhere in terms of the kids. And if there's a way that we can still serve as a resource or potentially find additional opportunities that exist, then I think we've built that relationship, that it might not be specifically here on the A field and the B field, but we have contacts too. And maybe there's a fit that works, that works for the organization, and we can help guide that conversation and hopefully lead to other opportunities in the future. So it is not a, it is, it's sad for the kids. It is time for the municipality, for this municipality. And if Mark needs anything from me, and if Mark needs anything from Lauren, we'll make sure he has it in terms of how we can assist the organization and what happens next.
I appreciate that. And I think it's unfortunate because, you know, Marlo, the concerns that he mentioned, and I'm sure that you got from other residents, you never know if it's somebody paying for the Bears or the opposing team, you know, things that he might not have control over, anybody on the Bears, it could be parents from other teams. I appreciate that you're taking the residents' interest and concern, addressing these. And yeah, fireworks, I don't know how I missed that. I must have been streaming something. I don't know. That's certainly a concern for everybody. But thank you for taking all those into account.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
We do have some individuals who are unable to make it here this evening, who have emailed in public comment. And therefore, I will package those emails together, and they will be included in your packets before you're making a decision.
Thank you. Okay, next up is legal matters. This evening, we will be considering approving a resolution 2024-04 ratifying the Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement between the Borough of Conshohocken and the Conshohocken Sewer Authority regarding the ownership and responsibility for storm sewer system serving the Borough of Conshohocken. Mr. Peters, would you mind?
Sure.
Walking us through the final version?
No problem. So at your last meeting, and also the meeting prior to that, your work session in February, we walked through what this agreement actually says. That's between the Sewer Authority and the Borough. At that time, specifically at your voting meeting, we informed you that we would be back with a resolution. The resolution is required under the Intergovernmental The resolution is required under the Intergovernmental Cooperation Act. It's how you actually enter into a contract with another municipal entity. There were, so there are two things that are occurring. One is adoption of that resolution, which approves the contract that you discussed and approved at your February voting meeting. And two, between then and now, the Sewer Authority has approved of this agreement on their end. That involved, and your prior approval involved authorizing Steph and I to finalize the agreement. And there are only two substantive changes that occurred. Those are, first, the agreement had a blank in it with respect to when the Sewer Authority would adopt rates, rules, and regulations. And I should note, it has already adopted rates, rules, and regulations regarding the fee and appeals to the fee. These are for anything else the Sewer Authority feels it needs in terms of rules and regulations regarding the actual maintenance and ownership of the infrastructure. The date that we inserted it in consultation with the Sewer Authority was June 30th of 2024, and those rates and rules, rates, rules, and regulations will come back before you, before they are approved. And the second change was, we did not have a specific number in for the quarterly or monthly payments to be made to the Borough, quarterly payments. We arrived at how to deal with that by, by the following formula. The Borough and the Sewer Authority would, would arrive at a budget for work to be done during each fiscal year. We've already done that for next year, and you've already seen that budget. And there would be a quarterly payment of 20% in each quarter. At the end of the year, obviously, there would be 20 additional percent that would need to be paid by the end of the year. And because the Sewer Authority doesn't have taxing power like the Borough does, it does need to make those payments through fees. So there is a specific provision in there that if the fees are delinquent, if there are delinquent fees, the Borough would receive its percentage, which is 61% of delinquent fees as they're collected by the authority. But I should note that the way that the budget was reviewed and reviewed by staff, it already accounted for delinquencies, so we don't expect that to be an issue. It's just that if, if it is an issue, the Sewer Authority, unlike the Borough, can't just raise money through taxes. So we would, in consultation with them, take part in the delinquency process. We wouldn't actually be doing the work, we would just be the beneficiaries of the work. And again, the, it would be based on the percentage of the budget that's allocated to the Borough for maintenance, and under the current budget, that's 61%. So those are the only changes from the prior agreement that you saw. Again, the agreement has been approved by the Sewer Authority, and if you're inclined, by adoption of the resolution, it approves the agreement, and then we'll keep moving forward.
Any questions related to what Mr. Peters just went over? Okay, hearing no questions. This evening, I would like to have a motion to approve Resolution 2024 ratifying the intergovernmental cooperation agreement, including the form of bill of sale between the Borough of Conshohocken and the Conshohocken Sewer Authority regarding ownership and responsibility for the stormwater system serving the Borough of Conshohocken.
I'll make that motion.
One second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that concludes our robust agenda for the evening. At this point, Mr. Mayor, do you have anything you'd like to share this evening?
Always. So the first thing is, this Sunday, is a big children's hospital fundraiser to support the cardiac center. And I'm really just floored to announce that 42 of our residents have signed up to join our team. And we are one of just three teams from Conshohocken that will be participating. So Conshohocken's fingerprints will be all over this major fundraiser. Our team alone so far has raised just shy of $8,000, with all proceeds going to the cardiac center ad shop. So, so thank you, everyone, for, for your support, and I'll be sure to share pictures with everyone in two weeks. And then the second thing is, the Conshohocken Library hosted a Read Across America event where they invited folks from all over Colonial, so myself, and we had Officer Valone and Sergeant Storey and members of the school board, and Megan from the Fire Department, all reading to, to our local, local children. So it was, it was a lot of fun, and I got to read one of Thomas's favorite books, which all the kids appreciated. So thank you for the invite, Conshohocken Library. I know we look forward to that, hopefully every year. I think it's a wonderful event. And then finally, we will have our big Patrick's Day Parade before our next meeting. So just a reminder to everyone, Saturday, the 16th, parade starts at 2:00 PM. The 5K is at 12, is that sound right? 11, 12?
12:30.
12:30, okay. And that's, that's through our Fire Department, and we look forward to a big, fun Borough presence and a really fun day. And thank you to our, our staff and to the AOH for putting that on every year. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Frye, anything this evening?
I'm good.
Ms. Elm?
I'm good, thank you.
Ms. Kingsley?
I'm good.
Ms. Barton? Mr. Serna?
Do we have a rain date for that? For the parade?
The 21st, following Saturday.
21st, Saturday. Thank you.
Nothing for me?
No, it's not. It's supposed to snow. I'm sorry.
Nothing for me.
Mr. Shumaleski?
Nothing for me, thank you.
All right, and I have nothing this evening. Thank you, everyone, for a long evening, and bearing with all...
We have a public comment.
Oh, yeah, I always forget about public comment. Any public comment? Mary, come on up. Sorry about that.
No worries.
So the proposal for the Flyers sounds amazing. What a wonderful opportunity. I'm glad we clarified that Gritty will be there. I think that that makes it even a better draw. The former Flyers alumni might not agree, but I think it's going to be a wonderful event. I was curious about what cost there might be in terms of police, fire services, anything like that, and would the contract with them include reimbursement? I mean, it sounds like an amazing, what a wonderful opportunity for Conshohocken, and spreading the word about what a great organization, what a great town Borough that we have. It was very interesting to see the interviews for the Sewer Authority. And coming from my perspective, working at EEOC before my retirement, one of the things that we would always tell organizations is try to be as consistent as possible when interviewing candidates. And you, I noticed that there were some uniform questions, but there were also a few questions that some candidates got that others didn't. And, and maybe you didn't need to ask them or felt you didn't need to ask them because you had their applications and resumes that we in the public didn't have. Just as a suggestion from a recovering retired lawyer, it can be a good practice to have the same questions for everyone. Certainly, in terms of for the public at the meeting, I know that you all had discussions for personnel, personnel matters in your sessions, but for the public who hear these, it's important, I think, for them to have the same answers, questions, and, you know, in terms of fairness, all of those good concerns. For the Gaga Pit, what a great presentation on that one. Talking with Mary Ann, I was wondering, why is it just one location? I think, I know that Stephanie, you talked about Parks and Recreation, we'll look and see what is better, but it looks so fabulous. I hope that there might be consideration, see where it is on one end, and have one on both sides of town. Because for kids sometimes and parents, it's not as easy to cross, so I would hope that you would have it on both. And I have a question about, in terms of the stormwater management, and you talked about, I'm sorry, I apologize, Karen?
Karen?
Talked about things that might be coming down the pike. With all the developments along the river, some, you know, already has to go through because of prior settlement agreements from many years before the prior council and the council before that, do any of them take into account what possibilities there will be for stormwater management and expenses that the town might have? Is any of that being, I don't know, borne by them? Is that something that could be borne by them?
Yeah, I can, I can answer that. So unfortunately, all the, all the development down there doesn't help us because we're talking about the Plymouth Creek for, for this work.
For this one, for Plymouth, but I mean, for the future, for Schuylkill.
But absolutely, as each new development comes in, they do extensive stormwater management. Yes.
But what about ones that have already been approved?
No, no, there's no way. Well, the only way to go back and recoup any of that is through a fee, and that's, that's what the Sewer Authority is trying to do. Yeah. So there's no other way to recapture those expenses.
But for future things going on, that's going to be, like, not just what is here, but what might be coming down the pike? I don't know. I think it's just going to be getting worse for, and as you said, the unfunded mandates.
It already is, it's already required. But the issue is that on top of what they're required to do, the Borough is required to do even more. And that's what we're up against.
Okay, and, just got one more question. Oh, in terms of walkability, I was looking back at the community plan and the attachments and goals for having more walkability along the river, and hearing, you know, I know that the proposal for what's going on in Washington has already been talked about, but what are we doing going forward to try to bring more walkability along the river? And can that be addressed with development?
Well, 401-433 is required to finish and connect into the current path that exists along the river, which now will run the entire length of the Borough of Conshohocken. So the entire river is walkable. A portion of that is not, is right in front of 401-433, so that will finish it and connect it. And they're actually proposing a little, I would say, innovative workout section, pod that will go to connect to that trail. So you'll be able to walk down to the river, work out on your apparatuses if you want to, and enjoy the entirety of the riverfront. So that is part of, it is the finalization of that plan.
Okay. All right, thank you all.
Good night. Any other public comment this evening? Okay, hearing none. Let me just read where I'm at on my agenda. I may adjourn.